See, that's how you call the meeting to order. You just put this meeting is being recorded, right? So I am calling the meeting to order. And if we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance, that would be appreciated. My pledge of allegiance is goodbye of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Welcome, everyone. The very first thing we need to do is introduce. Pardon. Very first meeting, Chris Parkman, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah, we're happy to have you too. So, thank you. And you're now seven days into it, right? A little bit more?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I hope you make it for many years.
Thank you.
I'm inundating him with numbers.
But welcome, welcome.
Totally.
All right. So the second item on the agenda is homeowners associations. And Oakwood Creek, Adam Glick, you're here, right? Do you have anything you want to share with us?
All right. I think something else. We have a few things we wanted to share, although they're the same things we shared last year. Things that all have to do with Oakwood Road and speeding on Oakwood Road. We have 12 elementary school days put up on that road. Some preschool days, but everybody in elementary school is over. We don't want speeding on that road. We do have data from when that speed sign was put up there. And that speed sign, 64% of people were over the limit on that road. We had a vacuum at 80 miles per hour. I personally saw someone going 79 miles per hour on the road. What I thought. It could have been a gay person. That person does like speeding a lot. And the average speed was 29.7 miles per hour, which is 25 miles per hour. But five miles makes a big difference. So we love something to be done about that road overall. I mean, personally, I know you guys aren't preferential for speed bumps or speed tables, but some kind of permanent speed sign, like, I do a picture. Like this, like a speed sign that says your speed was then put up someplace. They're about $4,000, what I saw. Where some are $2,800, $3,400, times where you shop. Ranger carries them. She puts those up. I think those do stop people. I know for me, when I see what speed you're actually going, you actually slow down. When I, you know, I mean, when I brought my kids to the Buffalo Park District for summer camp, they even have them in a parking lot just to get people to slow down. So, I mean, that would be something to do. Just any kind of action, you got to start somewhere to get some people to slow down that street would be a great thing. I'm sure a lot of people in the village would like on their streets as well. Another thing we wanted to address was the U-turns over by Oakwood at 83. When people are trying to avoid the traffic, turn off to feel more. I know you guys have talked about it before, about putting up kind of little barriers, like the barriers that stuff over, to stop them from making U-turns. There's a lot of them, especially during rush hour periods when everybody's trying to get down Gilmer Road. I guess they use that as to go west. And doing something to stop them from doing that because there's going to be a lot of accidents or has been accidents in the path. I know my neighbor's got an accident with somebody doing that. If there's something we can do about that as well. I know there's been some discussions, some engineering studies, something I believe you guys have done about those. That would be something great as well. Aside from that, we've had requests for restriping of that road. I know that's probably something that's normally on your maintenance of the road overall. But that's the major things we have for road and everything going back. I'm not sure if there is here, but I think no, there is not here. But we do have some people who complain about just having issues with coyotes. I'm not sure what there is to do about that in the village, about dogs being affected by coyotes. But that is pretty much what we have from, like you said, peacock coyotes around.
Yeah, we're going to have to live with the coyotes. So it's just giving the information out. Don't we have some stuff posted or we put some things out in newsletters too on the coyotes? I thought we did. I don't remember.
Yeah, we put that on social media and in the connections.
Right. But there's been no dogs in your neighborhood that have had.
I think there was one, this one person, one of our neighbors did have a dog.
Lost a dog?
Yeah.
In their yard?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, so people are worried.
I know. Yeah, I know. I mean, even 15 years ago, when I had a dog out in the tether and I caught the coyote coming right behind him and I saw him and scared him away. So that was like 15 years ago in my yard too. So they're out there, yeah. Fortunately, nothing happened to mine, but that's, I'm sorry to hear that. Hey, Keith, you're here, right? So any comments on the speeding or anything like that?
The speeding on Oakwood Road is kind of always on our extra patrol list when we have change. And the U-turns on 83 and Oakwood, I just sent out in. Yesterday, I had the manager send the course on.
My only recommendation with the extra patrol is instead of sitting west of 83 and Oakwood, patrol should sit, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. Instead of sitting east of 83 on Oakwood, it should sit west of 83 on Gilmer. Still observe what's going in because when they sit on Oakwood. People see them sitting there and then, of course, they don't do them. If they were to sit on the other side by the restaurant or by.
Lemon Hill Park.
Right, won't see the patrol, but the patrol car will see them doing it. And then when they come up Gilmer, they can be pulled over.
All right, well, striping and things like that, those are things that you'll look into, right? Okay. Anything else?
No, I mean, the time can be a mix around.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Adam.
Are you here for citizenship in the community? Thank you, come. You can have upfront or up front.
All right. Helen Dorn from Indian Creek Estates. Okay. And then Brian Clark from Cobblestone. I think I see you online, right?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can, Brian. Thanks for joining. Anything for the board?
Absolutely. What's that?
Just said, anything for the board? Anything you want to share with us or?
Yes. A couple of quick things. First of all, we had applied for the invasive weed grant almost a year ago. And so a quick shout out, first of all, for that is part of that process. We worked with the Conservancy and Scenic Corridor Committee, Jeanette Berger. And so a quick shout out to her. What a wealth of knowledge and experience. So a phenomenal resource in working with her and the committee to understand as we looked at getting rid of the invasive weeds and then reseeding our conservancies in the subdivision was, she's a phenomenal resource. So thanks to her. Any update on that? Because I know there was a bit of a delay, I think a pause in that process because of some staff changes and whatnot with the village. But are they, are y'all moving forward with that grant application program?
Yeah, so they're back on track and meeting regularly each month. So I can have Nicole, who's staffing that committee now, check in with you and kind of make sure you get updated on where they're at.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for that. And along those same lines, I mean, we've spent, you know, thousands of dollars, as I'm sure others have, fighting invasive weeds, especially the frag bites. But I'm sure you all, everyone sees them in other places. I mean, we have them right next door to us at the Country Meadows Grade School all over the place. So how do we impact some of those, I guess, call it public areas or, you know, to get them to also fight the invasive weeds so they don't just reseed where we've kind of eradicated them?
May I ask a loaded question? Is that around where the solar field is?
I'm not sure where that is.
Where are they at? Are they by the solar field?
They would, yeah, sort of, yes, around that. And then along the edge, I guess it would be the.
Isn't that the remediation that they haven't completed yet? The district hasn't completed?
I believe that's what the forester, one of the things that the forester had raised.
I think it's, yeah, because I think I remember reading that. So I think, so who's going to take the action on that? Because I think some of it's tied to the remediation of all the plants that were put in around that solar system. And yeah, so I guess if they've asked for a meeting, it's something to bring to them. Yep, you can bring that up too. So we'll bring it, we're going to bring it to the district.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much for that. And then finally, one of the things I noticed in the winter edition of the Bridge Newsletter, which I found very interesting and hopeful about, as a HOA that does provide our own maintenance, I know you had suggested the idea of providing assistance for paving, for HOAs that maintain their own roads. Is that something that you're moving forward with this year?
We don't know yet. So this is our first discussion for the budget is tonight. And it'll be one of the things talked about. You know, there's always competing priorities. I would love to see something like that implemented. And I'm going to find out what the trustees here present tonight think about it, right? So we're just starting the discussions.
Okay. Awesome. Well, you have our full support, so.
Yep. No, thanks, Brian. Thank you.
You bet. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. It's now time for public comment. Yes, please.
It's that time of year.
Yes.
To talk about the burn behind our home. Just as an incident, I think it's an important incident. After the storm last week, the big storm two.
We know all about it. We were here in the village hall. Yes, we'll never forget.
The day after, Commonwealth Edison had to replace the transformer between my house and my neighbors. And when I went out and I was talking to the supervisor, he said, I asked what they were doing. They told me they were replacing the transformer. And he said, unfortunately, we wanted to come in the back of Abbott property with cherry pickers. The berm is too steep. We couldn't get in, so they had to haul ladders and, which is more dangerous for the work personnel. And he said, we're supposed to have an easement. And I'm not sure what Commonwealth easement is, but if I'm not mistaken, I think it's 10 feet on either side of the hole, but I'm not positive. And they can't get to it because of the burn. Again, with all that rain, the water was coming down that berm. Just having a field day, it's worse than Patty's yard. And something needs to be done. I mean, the berm stops, it starts, it stops, it starts. There's no rhyme or reason for it. And it's just, as you know, and you've agreed, it's not just, they didn't have a permit when it was put in. God knows what is underneath it. I mean, what they used to fill it in and make the berm, but something needs to be done.
Dana, do you have an update on?
It's been an ongoing project, so I think this is the next step. I mean, we finally got to cut some of the leaves and growth last year. And so now I think the next step is.
Behind my, behind my house.
And I know they, I didn't realize they weren't going to cut other houses. So I didn't realize that now. So now I think the next step is to, you know, make them understand that it's not just Chris's house. They should be doing that for everybody. And then to talk to them about the berm, suggest, you know, if you can help me kind of take a look at that and find out, you know, exactly. Because I've been out there, like you said, I've been looking at it from different spots, going to different apartment buildings, parking lots and seeing where some places it's nothing and other places it's high, you know.
More than that?
No, there's no rhyme or reason for it. So it's, yeah, it's definitely, let's give it some time and take a look at it, find out what's going on and get to the bottom of it. But it'll take some time, I think, so.
You're welcome to come over anytime, even if I'm not there. Close the gate.
So we'll continue, tipsy the way.
Comments as well?
You've been a big help so far, Dana. I do appreciate it. Just thank you. And just to kind of continue with what Chris was saying, my yard is greatly affected with it. I have a lake in the back of it because it just kind of slopes kind of down from that site. So it doesn't help that situation. And then with this recent storm, there's of course the, there's a barbed wire fence that has some wooden posts, which just some of those junk trees and other things that are between that fence and that berm and that berm there have just collapsed over onto that, onto that barbed wire fence and knocked the post out. So I have some cleanup that I have to do with all of that stuff on the other side of the fence, on the Long Grove side that has fallen onto the property and kind of messed that up. So I dragged what I could from the back of the property to the front and had, you know, the Vernon Hills Public Works come and grab those branches. But they're pretty sizable branches, some of them, that I couldn't grab them myself to drag them to the front yard for them. So I would like that cleared behind my property as well, which again, I'm right next door to Chris Meyer. So 73 Cherry Valley.
Can we get your name too then?
Sure.
Did you get?
Yep.
Did you have it? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, who am I giving you?
No, can I get your name?
Absolutely. It's Patty. And last name Duran, D-U-R-A-N. It's at the 373 Cherry Valley, so it's the backside of that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Dana, you're, okay, thank you. Okay. Other public comment? Go ahead.
Well, something else, I'll go first.
All right, so sir?
Ladies first.
Oh, thank you.
Jane, yes.
The Star of the Society is wondering what his plan is in regards to securing and storing the artifact, the barn, right? Should we move that now and move it in our barn?
I don't know that, so that was, Kent, did you have, somewhere in there, there was something about who's going to take the contents out? Where are those going to go, right?
The same company that moves the barn is moving the contents, right?
Right.
I think there's interim location they were going to put some of them into, move the barn and then move the contents.
And they'll probably have all of that done in a day, actually.
So it won't be sitting around for days or weeks. It'll just be temporarily out, move the barn and bring it right out.
Look, I ran into Dave DeBooth. DeBooth, is that the name?
Yeah, it's the name of the company that's moving it.
Yeah, he writes the contours that we did here last week. Because I saw this guy wandering around the building and I wanted to talk to him. And he kind of waiting to think, the big stuff could stay, the little stuff needed to be removed. He didn't, he was doing it. That's what I'm saying.
I found out that paperwork and Dave DeBooth are two different arms of that company. So we'll talk to them.
Jane, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Rory Christensen. I live by the forest preserve on Long McHenry Road. My two questions are, is there plans for 22 to be expanded that we know of at this point?
You live by which forest preserve?
Heron Creek.
Oh, Heron Creek. Okay, got it. Yeah. So there are plans for it to be widened, right? Who knows when the state's going to start or do it, so.
It's a mythical five-year.
Yeah, it's in the five-year plan. It's there.
It's a state project.
Right, I understand. But you would know about that information.
Well, it's been like in the five-year plan. It's going to be next year, then it's not. And it's in the plan. It's their plans.
The other thing was, is there a proposed bike path or walk path from downtown to Route 22?
Well, we would like to see one there, right? We'd like to see one there. I mean, we've asked for funding or tried to apply for funding and we've looked at that. And it's something that we've never been able to, you know, pull it together yet. When 22 gets widened though, they will be putting a path down either side of 22.
Not 22 itself.
22 itself, right. What's missing would be the path into the village. That would be nice. But it is something that's part of, we also have a pathway plan that's been commissioned, right? And that'll be one of the things that'll be looked at is can we get a path down Old McHenry from 22 or farther all the way into the village?
Right away.
That's part of the planning, understanding what makes the most sense on, what easements or property would we have to purchase or, you know, all of that.
So there may be some eminent domain involved with that.
No, it wouldn't be eminent domain, it would be eminent.
Yeah, buying the land from the homeowners or the property owners.
So there's not a specific plan on what side of the road that's happening?
Not yet.
No, no.
Exactly.
Well, I, no, sir, go ahead. Why do you ask? I'm sorry.
Well, because it would affect me drastically because I'm my property.
Oh, so you would maybe not appreciate having it there?
I don't want it.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I just don't see, who would be using it that much for the amount of taxpayer money that would be involved to do this project? Whether it's, I mean, considering the lowlands it has to go through where the bridge is, if it's not on the right of way, I mean, just considering what it would cost to go across that area. I'm just concerned about what's happening in the future, that's all.
Okay. I appreciate it.
No specific plans?
No, there's no specific plans right now. It's just one of those things, it wouldn't it be nice, right? That's what the, that's all it is, right? It's an aspiration, is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that feedback though. Appreciate it. Young man?
I'm adding on to what you said before. I know you have sidewalks in downtown Long Grove, but towards like down that. They start with not coming across trees to target, say biking, walking or.
Yeah, so we're, just to, can I, I ask you about where specifically you're talking about? As far as, are you talking west of the bridge?
Like from?
So we live in Long Grove, uh, Long Grove.
Noel.
Noel, yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay, so, got it.
He's my neighbor.
Okay, got it.
He lives up in my neighborhood. Actually, he has friends that live in other subdivisions. You have to go down 53 and we won't let him ride on the street because of 53. And if anything was ever gone, you probably feel the same. So it's difficult for people to access other neighborhoods.
Right. Yeah.
Well, that's part of the path idea. If we can figure out a way to connect north, south, east, west and figure out a way to fund the paths and figure out a way to make it amicable for the neighbors that might be affected by it. The idea is to connect north, south, east and west so that we all have access to get in and out of downtown, even if you live north of 22 like myself. We, you know, we raise three kids on the bank, so Diamond Lake Road, which is a 45 mile, 40 mile an hour, like we could not get anywhere. We're marooned in our subdivision because of that. So that's the effort that Rita's working on, is trying to figure out how we do it. It's been discussed for 30 years, there's maps in that closet there. But what you find is that some subdivisions want it, some don't. Some will give you easements, some won't. And of course, you need the funding to be able to do it too or anything. But it's a very complicated task. It's not easy, but it's one that my children and obviously today's generation are, you know, think it's important. So really appreciate you bringing that up because you're absolutely right. We really need that.
We do. And it's, I mean, I've taken that, I'm bigger than you, but, you know, from that forest preserve to get to downtown to get, I live on North Arlington Heights Road, that bit of 53 is frightening. When there is shoulder, it's crumbling and it's unsafe just for a bicycle, but then there's not much to it and people whip by. So very much understand. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments. Anyone else? All right.
To go back, that is hard, hard, it's even wider, like on the road tree. To get out, it'd be nice to.
I hear you. Okay, then.
Can we, can we have his name?
Oh, can we get your name, young man? Matthew? Matthew?
D-I-O-M-C-K.
Yes. Lex Seaver, okay. I know that name. I worked there. Never mind. All right. So the public safety reports. Keith, Tony Kaiser.
Hi, Keith Kaiser from the sheriff's office, not the fire department, obviously. Not much to report. Had a nice meeting with the new village manager last week where we went over sheriff's office operations and the contract. Fair enough. On that note, the contract that was approved by the village board two weeks ago, it's kind of, it was scheduled for the county court committee in the last week of March and with the county court for approval on April 9.
So the contract has to go before the board for formal approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes through the finance administrative committee and the logic difference.
Okay.
And then the next week it goes to county board for their.
Will it be approved in time before expiration?
Contract expires April 30.
Got time, huh?
April 9 is the bad day.
Okay, got it.
So we just express that, those county administrations.
Thank you.
Oh, it's, yeah, on the agenda.
Right. Could be a problem otherwise. Okay.
Last thing I have real quick, I've wanted to bring it up the last couple of meetings, but I forgot about it. The last movie that was filmed in Long Grove, well, not specifically Long Grove, there is a Lee County Sheriff's car that's featured in the movie.
Ah. And it says like county, not Gotham or anything.
It says Lee County Sheriff, because they link their.
Do you want to star in the movie? Do you want to star in the movie? There's another movie in the making. You might be able to sneak in there.
Is that great enough?
I didn't expect to be submitted or memorialized. My dinner was very exciting.
I don't know if I'm on it. I took the whole year. But that's all I have. If anybody asks me, thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Thank you. Okay. So we have a consent agenda and I'll kind of go through the items. We're going to approve the, on the consent agenda, you have approval of the February 2024 bill warrant. You have approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the February 27, 2024 meeting, subject to non-major changes. Approval of the special event application for the Fred Astaire Dance Studio salsa night. Approval of a temporary liquor license for the Fred Astaire Dance Studio for the salsa night special event. Approval of a special event application for cars and cigars, Special Olympic Car Show fundraiser on 7/21/24. And then also with that, approval for a license to conduct a raffle by Newman Cigars and More Special Olympics on the same date and waiving the $25 license fee. Now, regarding the last item on the agenda, we have removed that item, item 11, from the consent agenda tonight. So this matter is not going to be before the board for consideration. As background, about a year ago tonight, the village board adopted an ordinance, 2023-0-1, and that ordinance was provided to Brothers Field at that time. But I would ask staff to give them a copy of it now, if you have it, which, you know, made clear that the activities in Brothers Field had been allowed under the, what is this word here? Exigencies? Exigencies of the pandemic. I'm reading a statement here, thank you. Seems like I didn't prove this enough. Its temporary special event activities, one, its temporary special events activities did not have an authorized business license. And two, there's not currently a recognized use under the zoning code for Brothers Field use. So ordinance number 2023-0-1 made it an allowance for Brothers Field through October 2023 with the express understanding that Brothers Field would present and pursue a redevelopment plan for the site. This has not occurred yet. Because Brothers Field use is not an authorized use under the village code and because we're no longer operating under the special circumstances of the pandemic, item 11 is simply not going to be before the board tonight to consider. As a result, the village board will not be discussing it tonight. But I do invite you to discuss with the village staff and how we might proceed to advance the plans.
So when you get the application, you said that in February, well, they started that process until February 20th and all that went through.
As I understand it, the village planner is not here. We do not have the application, the current revised application. We got the plans. And I saw those, but they don't have everything together. We don't know what's completed and is not complete. And so I think what we're going to have is you're going to be following up, Chris, with Monaline, the village planner, and they're going to look at everything and get back to you on what's needed and what's required to advance the ball. But we don't have that right now. And it, and so that's why, you know, that's why it's not being considered tonight.
Yeah, um, you know, we are, we are moving the ball forward. My understanding was, I know we couldn't just keep going as it was, but with this new plan, the pavilion, the indoor side, like that's all in response to continue going. Obviously, that couldn't get done by, by now. So what we were seeking was another temporary ordinance for this year because that is in process. Like that, as soon as we get to go ahead and we got the plans, we're going to start that construction. So this season leading into that, the idea was that we would have the brick and mortar by the end of the season, you know, if everything goes well. So my understanding was like, we're not here asking for the same thing to happen as to have before, but we're here to say, hey, we've got all these steps forward. We've got all this new money invested in plans and everything for zoning based on that. And I understand we'll have a discussion later, but we're also on a bit of a timetable here to just kind of hold that carrot. When we got the movie that's put in the chute at that field, you know, we're not looking, but, you know, we got, we got a lot of stuff going on. We have a lot of community events that are already planned there. We've got historical, society that's got things planned. So it'd be tough to, to put a plot on this and still make this happen.
Yeah, but it won't, will not be considered tonight. Let's, let's get everything in order. And I, you know, Chris is going to run point on that with Monaline and see where exactly we're at. Okay?
What I'm hearing is it won't be considered until that zoning is completed.
No, I don't know that that's the case either.
Then what would be the change from then, from now until that change?
We don't have everything. There's nothing, it, it's basically, we're kind of almost at the same point where we were last year, at the end of the year, right? We're not, we haven't advanced, the ball has not been advanced. So I don't know what's, I, I, I saw the plans that, you know, that you presented.
And those, those, you know, project a lot of time and investment. To say that we're in the same place after seeing those, I mean, the application itself isn't completed quite to speed, but we got a lot of movement on this.
We need to be a little further along to, you know, so let's, you know, let, let's find out what can be done, where we're at, and, and, you know, there's another meeting in, in, you know, in March, and there's poss, you know, possibility is that, you know, we'll be ready. I don't know where we're at. So nothing is before us right now that we can even look at as a board, right?
Okay. The plans to the city center. Has everyone, have they seen them?
They have not been presented to the, to the board yet.
Would you like a copy of them so you can at least see there's been some movement? Because I, I can understand you sitting there just hearing words, but for those of you that know how these plans are developed, you would see the hours and the investment behind them to come up with that. And that, and that is, like, to have them at the very least.
I think we'll be getting the plans to the, to the board. They'll, they'll share them with them. But the village staff needs, you know, there's, there's some work that needs to be done and getting that application completed, getting the review from Monaline, then we'll know where we're at, then we can get back to you.
Does the process need to go to planning and zoning or it's.
It does, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
I mean, there has not been a clear definition of what they're looking for. And up until maybe the last couple of weeks, there has not been anything that has been submitted that's ready for presentation. And I don't even know if, if, uh, Monaline has determined that it's complete enough for any kind of presentation. This goes back, as you may remember, from March of twenty-three, and then they came back in May asking for more events than what was originally allowed. And the village board thought was pretty clear at that time that it would allow it, but there needed to be some appreciable progress.
I understand.
So we're, you know, we're.
It, it sounds like.
Twelve months later, but not, not twelve months from when.
It sounds like we could have some better two-way communication on both sides also in terms of next part of the process involves the planning and zoning.
You know, my, my attorney did send the plans February twenty-second. As of today, he has still not received a response after a couple of emails. And so it just, I get to deciding, I, you guys respond to me, but he had separately sent something in and then followed up with that with Amanda. He still has not heard back on it.
Amanda replied to the email that I've copied on. Those are just between us. He sent, he sent it himself, I think, because he's setting up the whole zoning process.
He's completing them this week.
Completing it this week?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's see where we're at. It's not going to happen tonight. And there's nobody here that, in my opinion, that wants to put you out of business in any way, shape or form. We just need to, you know, get everything in front of us so that it's, you know, what was, we have something to work with, right?
No.
So we can move this along.
Are you looking for a motion to approve consent agenda by five to ten?
Yes.
Is there, if one minor change in the board meeting, or President Jacob's report, it's then to say one million after zero, but it is one million.
Okay.
It needs to be changed.
Okay, as amended, amended, so moved by trustee Chris Meyer?
Yes.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor?
Trustee Chris Meyer, aye. Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Yes.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. The next item is discussion, an approval of an ordinance amending the section three dash two dash five of the Long Grove Village Code, creating a class five liquor license for issuance for Hakusushi, DBA, TTO, Boki or Boku Korean Restaurant. Any conversation on that? Or somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Like drinking, I'll move to approve that.
Okay. Moved by trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call?
Trustee Borowski, trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Discussion and approval of a resolution authorizing Northworth Bank and Trust, North America, as an approved depository for the village of Long Grove, and authorizing and ratifying signatories there, therefore. This is routinely done and this is done because of the change in village managers.
Yes, this is routine, and just for everybody, this change in the signatures, it did not change the process that for major amounts of money, it requires both a staff and an elected official to agree and sign. So it's just changing the signatures.
Do you want to make a motion?
I do.
Okay. Motion to approve by trustee Chris Meyer?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call?
Can I take it down, please?
Yes.
Sorry. So as we move into the rest of twenty-four, and we move into twenty-five, which is going to be another election cycle for trustees, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
Somebody's up in twenty-five. Do we want to start thinking about potential backup trustees to be involved in the financial approval process so that should trustee Chris Meyer or somebody else who's up for reelection not run, be able to at least have the background and understanding and involved in that process and avoid, should there be a transition? That's just a hypothetical question. I think it's something we should think about because absolutely no objection to this proposal, but just down the road, does it make sense for us to have another backup set of eyes starting to get involved in the process?
Okay. You'll take that under advisement and add that to the list, right? Okay, so we have a live motion moved by trustee Chris Meyer, seconded by trustee Tanucci.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a village planners' report tonight?
No, there's no.
Okay.
It feels, I know I wasn't here last time. It feels like we haven't had a planners' report for quite some time.
Uh, we, did we have a slight?
We did last, or last week.
We did last week.
Last meeting.
Yes. Yeah, last meeting, thank you.
Is there a written report provided with a lot of detail just for them verbally?
Okay, and then the village engineers' report?
All right. Village engineers' report is in the board packet. Just a couple of things to highlight here. Jane brought up the, Ruth Barn is still working with the boot and Carmichael to get that thing moved. So I don't have an exact date yet, but we'll move it forward with that so they can get that. There's a pre-construction meeting with Bear Construction tomorrow morning, so it'll be, I'm the person, I think we talked about, just to make sure that we can work all of that together and we'll see if there's any, certain impacts about that. Haven't heard any. Start date from, from Bear Construction, yes, they said the abilities, but not the requirements to serve that April first, if I understood it from Wolf. So more on that as we learn.
When are you going to be planning those properties for what Barnes is going to be? Oh, there's a, there's a, isn't it?
Uh, where the. Barnes is going to be, no, that's in the old area.
Oh, just the map you had, no, the map you had that was set up to build.
Uh, that's an old rendition of that.
Oh, where's it?
Uh, just east and slightly north of Archer School.
Did they pour the beers last week?
No.
The weather was bad?
Uh, there's that and then we get the, we're going to get the timber mats for here to cross the line.
Can we have an estimate on that? Will that happen?
Um, reached out to Carmichael today. He's been here back. The good news is they were in town today and fixed the bridge, but the bad news is they weren't over here.
Don't go to rent, those need to try to make some direction.
Correct. Um, next item, number four, this is the Lake Michigan Water Connection to Buffalo Grove. Last week, the federal budget was passed and the appropriations for what was the community project funding, projects throughout the state were released. And last year, if you remember Congresswoman Shikowski took the Lake Michigan Water Connection to budget with the request of two-point-three million dollars, which was eighty percent of the estimated costs to complete the project. Long Grove was notified that they got just a little bit under a million dollars once the federal budget got passed. And speaking with other municipalities and others that got the community project funding, all got half, if not less, of what was requested. So Long Grove is kind of in the pool with everybody else. So that information was new as of last week, so there's going to need to be additional discussions on what to do with that million dollars and what the shortfall may or may not be. Without getting into too much detail and into the weeds, there was a main connection with that project, which was a water main connection from Thompson and Arlington Heights Road.
Arlington Heights Road to north and then over to the water treatment plant, like the primary connection to service to the village. There was also an emergency connection, which was kind of a wishlist type item, but would allow the village downtown water system to maintain water in the event that there was some sort of failure at the water treatment plant. So those will be some of the discussions, you know, does everything happen? Does the wishlist, it's, you know, continue to be a wishlist item, you know, things like that.
So Chris and I, you know, certainly need to dive into the details of that so that we can figure out, you know, what the recommendation is with the funding that was awarded to the village.
Will you be able to discuss any of that under the budget discussion we're going to have tonight? Okay, thank you.
Is there a deadline for that? Like, did you ever use the money by surgery of the taxpayers?
Um, I've heard that that is two years from when the grant agreement is, is signed. Also heard that it takes six to nine months to get the grant agreement signed. So, so yes, there will be a little bit of time.
In other words, the project gets put a couple of years probably.
And, and it could go away. So yes, it could go, it could be used it or what it says.
Yeah.
I know you, I know you're always.
More.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing I was just going to comment on, Arlington Heights Grove reconstruction that's coming up, don't have a start date yet for the contract, being awarded that, that contract, I believe it's probably, awarded that contract is probably at the same meeting that Lieutenant Kaiser referenced earlier. So once, once that's awarded and we get a start date, I'll.
Okay.
Other than that, we have a head to highlight if there's any questions.
Can I have a weird question? They cut all the trees down in the, in all of our Arlington Heights Road. They can't expand on the edge without taking trees up?
So they, they're reconstructing all of that. They did the advanced tree clearing because of the northern long-eared bat. So I'd have to look back, was that?
Because of the what?
The northern long-eared bat. It's now an endangered species and to avoid disrupting their habitats, trees need to be cut between November first and March thirtieth.
I guess my real question is, why did the tree need cut?
I would need to look at that.
Um, the trees, why were the trees cut down?
Yeah, exactly.
Because they're, they're reconstructing that whole thing. And they had to pull them down because it's a total replacement of everything. And so now the question is, will they put anything back, right?
Well, they certainly aren't going to put fourteen inch, you know, twelve and fourteen inch trees.
But it's, it's major, the whole meetings and everything are all being changed. And that's what the, that's what the county said when we asked the question, right?
It, it just, you know, like, I, I know many years ago, we had meetings where we had some capital plan, there was a thing, I was like, oh, let's do the tree scape and then do the water. And like, wait a second, like the sequencing.
Right.
One would think at some point the sequencing of trees could have been anticipated.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I can look at the plan. I remember discussions about native grasses in there and.
I don't think they're putting any trees back. That's, I don't believe they are.
I think there was a few that got approved. I remember Buffalo Grove said, yeah, we'll own and maintain those and water them, but let me look at the plans.
Just from the.
Get you some information on that.
Yeah.
There's all honey locusts, which are just crap anyway.
Really?
They're all, they're all honey locusts. I grew them earlier, big for twenty-five.
They still, you know, are taking in.
I get it.
O two and.
I get it. I understand, but.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, discussion of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Village of Long Grove budget. Who's going to lead the discussion?
Should I kick it off?
Sure.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to get.
Can I say something? I'm, I'm, we're about to talk about the budget, which is really boring. No, no, you can leave for, for sure. I would say it's the one, where you put your money is one of the most important ways you say what's important, right? So please feel free to leave. I'm, I'm a mayor badge counselor for that. You know, you can do whatever you want. You came with a, a specific topic and thank you very much. I just wanted to point out, this is where we kind of really put our money, where we think our things are important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are not required to say. So where we are, obviously we've had staff turnover and, and changes and all of that. So this is a first draft for discussion. It is not a final draft. Clearly, we're not going to take action, nor is it ready to do so. I, I overall, you know, trying to be really sick but prudent on the forecast, in some of the largest items, particularly in revenues, we rely on the Illinois municipal lead projection, which over the last many years have proven fairly close. We certainly keep an eye on our particular experience, but as a starting point, many of those things depend on, you know, X dollars per capita. So they come to us as a town of eighty-three hundred, eighty-four hundred people. And so, and then in some cases, we might haircut this. There is no case where we round, trying to be prudent on all of that. There's some interesting things, you know, the general budget is our keep the lights on budget, okay? You know, the general government operation. So there's not a ton that's particularly interesting and new, but there's a few items I'd call out. And I think, I tried to put some things here on just this, just quick old summary.
You want me to show it?
Yeah, why don't you?
Yeah. If I can, where's my share?
Just in terms of process also, I just want to thank the staff, Dana and Art, keeping this going earlier, and also Jeff for his early involvement in this on the, on the capital plan. And now in seven days, Chris has had to kind of like dive in. Fortunately, it's one of his comfort zones, so that's a good thing. So sales tax right now, we are running ahead of our current budget, but. um, but we're gonna reduce this somewhere because the governor is proposing eliminating 1% grocery tax. Okay, I wasn't part of the estimate, you all were, but the estimate was about $140,000 hit. Where you see that in the budget is two areas. And the reason you see that is because the sale, the grocery that is important to us in Sunset Grove, 60% of that sales tax is pledged to the TIP district. 40% comes to us directly. That 60% so far has also come back to us. But what you see is every month, part of the 40% comes directly. And then once a year, that 60% is tallied up by the people, um, that amalgamated, who is the custodian and paying agents for those bonds. They have to look and say, all right, we collected all the sales tax in case we needed it, we don't need it. So that $140,000 reduction is getting, uh, split across two different areas. So, and, and you'll, we'll see it in two, every month and all that. Does that make sense?
There's no indication the state is going to make us whole like they did with the sale tax reduction during COVID?
They would not.
Not at this point.
Um, it was a big topic at the Municipal, uh, League, Lake County Municipal League Breakfast, right? And, you know, everyone was, you know, um, asking the representatives, both senators and, uh, uh, the, the actual representatives. And it sounds like the governor is holding firm on the, the grocery tax. Now, I did ask the question via note card. And Vic actually, you know, clears this up for me too, is right now we're, we're prohibited from, um, charging a 1% grocery tax ourselves, right? Um, the way the, the code's written. So I did ask the question, well, even if you do prohibit, or even if you do, um, uh, take it away, the 1% grocery tax away, could we, would, would you, our elected officials, consider, um, allowing us to implement on our own, uh, local 1% tax? And they all said, absolutely, absolutely. Now the question is how? Right? I don't know how and, and what, but they all said yes in the meeting.
And the how really is because in our state regulations, there's something that says, you know, groceries, grocery sales are exempt.
Right.
We, like, no municipality can go do it on their own.
They would have to change something.
So it's not just us saying we wanna do something, we gotta get Springfield also.
Um.
Yes, no?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's it, no, no. And Nabilah, uh, Nabilah Said came back to me, and this is the question I have for staff, cause, um, she, I, I sent letters out to our elected officials the week prior about this. And then Nabilah, Nabilah wrote me back, um, and said, uh, well, basically she said, if, if you're able to do this on your own, right, and we, we gave you the ability to do that, would you be able to recover that money back? And that's the question for village staff, can we get that? Would we be able to get that same, that 140 grand back, right? I don't know.
To me, you know, there's, there's a timing.
The answer is theoretically, yes. But this is really one of those devils in the detail as to how they write it because there's a variety of ways that it could be written into the statute. If they do it in a way that makes it seamless, then we shouldn't lose anything. It should be, you know, one, one kicks in when the other one shuts off. I, I'm not willing to bet on that happening. But, but, but it is possible. But I, I, you know, certainly some of the initial responses that have come out have been, oh, don't worry, just go ahead and levy it, without any recognition of the fact that neither a home rule or a non-home rule, the municipality has the ability to that.
Yeah, it's not a home rule thing, it's, uh, Springfield has said, nobody can do this except us.
Yeah.
Anyway.
And then Marty, Marty McLaughlin, um, obviously did a press conference like the week before too, right? So, for the paper, I don't think that did anything, but.
I know, it, it's.
The question is, even if we could and we did, did it replace 140 or just?
That was, that's what we're trying to.
I mean, the, the 140 represents a 1% tax on, uh, grocery store foods.
Approximated, approx.
An estimate.
Estimated, estimated.
And so if we are able to, uh, levy that tax and the state stops, then we should recover the 140,000. Again, there are, there are timing issues and just like with the state tax right now, they, they carve out different things. If there are carve outs that affect what we can do, that's gonna make a, a difference in the total.
For budgeting purposes, we're assuming that money is not there.
For right now, it is, it is out. It is out. I, the other two, will point income tax, reduced that, taken a haircut. So it's basically flat with this year's budget, even though, um, the IML projection is for it to be up. So that's, you know, a little bit of buffer. And so this local use, again, the local use is, uh, you know, when people order things on the internet, they come back and it's, it's just very hard for us to gauge because if it's fulfilled out of Illinois, it goes to the sending town. If it's fulfilled out of a different state, it comes to the receiving town. Right now, we're running a little under budget. We're using the IMLS and that will keep track of that the next couple of months. So. Issues on the reserves, recall, we're carrying large reserves because part of that was we knew we need to for the village hall rehab. And we weren't sure what was going on with Lake Michigan Water. We have, uh, money in four different accounts. The largest one, uh, is providing something like 5.4%. We have not taken the time, had not had the time to go through and say, are we being very consistent in where we see the interest as it applies to every single one of our funds? Okay, and how do we wanna handle that? The really conservative would be to say, we don't forecast it and it's all a surprise. Don't know, that's conservative, but it's not also putting our money to work when we could be doing good things with it.
What's the dollar amount of interest that we've gotten so far with the interest rates spiking up?
Uh, I don't know across all of that, but our largest account right now, um, you know, it is spread through the Wintrust, uh, with the Wintrust system. We have $11 million aggregated in there and that's earning 5%. Do the math.
Half a million so far.
Half a million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So once the money's fat, you lose that income too, so.
Yes, exactly. And that's why when I was asking Wolf for their drawdown, that would be helpful for us to understand when does the cash start getting, needs to be fattened.
Right, right.
Uh, the TIP, when we refinance that TIP, I, that has been good because now as long as we are current with both the open space fund and the general fund, and that also means the general fund is getting some revenues. And so that's reflected in here. Overall, the revenues we've got in there right now are 4%. The other things that are in there, again, general government, snow and mo, legal, engineering, communications, things like that. There's some modest things in for, um, uh, uh, staff increases. And, you know, you're seven days in, so I'm sure there's more to be thinking throughout. We've always talked about, um, you know, performance plans and budget, uh, bonus budget kind of thing. When I asked, we had all of the different proposals for things in the budget that might be new to consider. Though, there were two that people were unanimous on. One was to put in some sort of part-time finance person. That was unanimously yes, whether we call it a director, whatever we call it. My recommendation and what's reflected in here is something on the order of like $50,000, which would be, I think, on the high side and make that an outside consultant or through an agency. So we do not have to bear, um, benefits or retirement. So in this budget is $50,000 as an outside temporary consultant or something like that. That was on the high side. I, I don't know what the going rate is, but if it was 200 an hour and you did 20 hours a month, which I think is about an average we would need, that 50 would be more than sufficient.
That's not a bookkeeper.
No, we have a bookkeeper, very good one. We actually have a key person risk there. She knows a lot. To Chris's point, right now, most of the financial knowledge, and I don't mean this to sound bad or long enough, is probably me, Debbie and Vic. And you get, and you get to lead the next in line, you know, but, no, but seriously.
Yeah, I know, I look at all the reports.
We have a very good bookkeeper, but that's not the same as driving things like let's refinance debt. Or let's make sure we have, you know, our investment policy is up to date.
I mean, for example, um, whose idea was it to look at the change in the bank accounts? Was that yours?
Me and Denise froze it.
Denise, yeah. Well, and, and just realizing that we weren't making as much interest as we could, so we moved the money around, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, we changed banks.
We changed banks.
And that was to make it easier for the bookkeeper to make sure things were clearly, she had the right access. Before it was Dave having to take statements to her.
Right. But, but the, uh, but the change in the bank account.
The change in the bank account, yeah, Art and I talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah, to like get it in the right place.
Cause the MAC safe account.
Yep.
It was the MAC safe account where you could spread the money out.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, staff, staff did the research on that for sure, yeah. What I participated in, you know, we don't have policies and procedures, the things on the audit. That person would be taken there. There's, I put a whole other list of items and hopefully it was clear which ones I'm doing, which ones staff is doing, which ones aren't getting done.
Okay.
The other thing, anything else meaningful in the general fund? I don't think so.
No.
There wasn't nothing else. I think some nifty things in terms of we talked about holiday decorations, not making the teazle people have to come through the grant program. What are your thoughts on that? Like, let's take it out, make it, make it a separate line item.
The teazle people not having to go through the grant program. Got it.
Yeah, we should just recognize that we're going to.
I think my attention comes through, I hope. I, I would propose that instead of, you know, having the HBLGVA come back and say, okay, in November, we need help with Christmas decorations, instead of the park district.
Put in the budget.
Putting in a grant, let's put it in there, okay? Um, so that would be, and that needs to be kind of like fixed and tied there. Sorry, I'm doing a lot. On the general expenses, our wages right now, we've had such turnover and new people in, you know, and out. There's no way to talk about trending there. There's 15% over what we're paying under the line right now because we don't know who's gonna do what where when on code inspection, code and, the code enforcement inspection and so forth. Lake County Sheriff's contract, that's the worst. Snow and mo, some of the, some things are flat and some things are up. Legal, 4%. Overall, the expense is up 13%. That includes the $800,000 transfer from the general fund to the capital fund for the rest of Village Hall. That's why we've been building those reserves. Okay, so that inclusive of that $800,000 expense is up 13%. So this team is not an, that's not a Friday number.
Turn, turn the page?
Turn the page. This is just a different way of looking at it. And the other thing we haven't had, we've talked about a couple of months ago, but haven't had as much right now is where are we on the capital?
Jeff, can you see that? Yes. Can you guys see that? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so you can see where our largest areas are.
I guess you can pass.
Capital budget, the biggest projects are roads and village hall. Okay, that's the mill. I know, when we talked a couple of months ago, we asked Jeff to take a look at, so the near-term roads are really good. That's definitely scheduled to be in the business. The uptime ones have got an inflation adjuster, but then rounded because we're not that good at forecasting down to business dollars.
Yep.
Those are the two big projects. The sources will be our infrastructure tax. We're forecasting that up 2%, the trend is higher. The $800,000 transfer we just talked about, no grants for current year projects. I'm saying that the Lake Michigan Water is not a current year project. We should discuss that. I don't know, at this point, the number is you just said, are we, you wanna talk about that now, Jeff, or table that? If, if you say 2.3 with 80%, that says it's really 3.9, which means we need 1.9.
Well, I, so I, I guess talk about, um, just talk at, just at a high level, how that was gonna be set up, right?
Yeah, what's the approach?
Because we were gonna have to cut a leg off of the water system. Just, just at a high level, talk about how it was designed, how much it was gonna cost. And then is there a way to do it where we only do one leg and, uh, Lake Michigan Water in, right?
Yep, yep. So like I said, um, you know, there's the primary connection, which is, uh, Arlington Heights Road and to the backside of the water treatment plant. And then there's the emergency connection. So put those two together, all in with soft costs was 2.0 million by 1.0 million. Separating those two out, the main connection was 1.8 million of that, um, which includes the, um, soft costs. Construction of that was just under 1.5 million. So, um, and, uh, Chris Sparkman and I were talking last week, you know, there's gotta be a, a inflation factor on that because this was, uh, these numbers were as of March 10th, 2023. And, you know, that was, assuming the federal budget would get passed by October 1st and this would be a 2024 project, but now we're a year later. You know, the wish, just to round it out, the wishlist, uh, that emergency connection, which would have been along, uh, about 83, is just over 1.9 million, or 1.09 million all in. So, uh, that can, uh, certainly remain a wishlist item. You know, the primary focus is servicing the water, uh, plant. And the new connection, Arlington Heights Road into the backside would service both the daily domestic demand and also addressing, improve, um, fire flow capacity of the system.
So did I understand correctly, if you do only the main pipe and use the existing people as a backup, it's about 2 million, 1.9 million. Is that the total?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's the construction and it had a 10% contingency in it and then, uh, the soft class. So that was all that.
The grant is just under 1 million, that would leave us 1 million out of. If you have to do that, we have to do, um, radium mitigation, which we're estimating at about a half a million. Looks like, like it or not.
We're gonna have to spend a half a million, or we could spend a whole million and get lake water.
I find that really easy.
Is there a timeline on the radium mitigation? Would there be a chance we're gonna have to do that?
It's being, uh, forced upon us by the Lake County, uh, Public Works Pre-Treatment Ordinance. That was passed 2019, I believe. And the county has been gracious in acknowledging that, uh, COVID has, had its impacts on municipalities. So probably every six months or so, we ask is where the, the village is on plans to comply with the ordinance. And we keep, uh, advising them that, you know, the strategy is a Lake Michigan connection. So I would imagine Joel Simpson will be contacting the village here probably pretty soon, asking, uh, what the plans are.
So just to wrap it up a little bit, half a million, keep the existing plant, radium mitigation, 1 million, um, lake water, but keep the existing plant for backup. If we do that, then we have to maintain the existing plant, which means it's ongoing in cost. Which we would not have if we decommissioned it.
Wait, don't we still have to distribute the water?
Yes.
I'll drive up the wells and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, just to, just to clarify, the plant itself, um, will remain as a distribution because when the water comes in from Buffalo Grove, there's an air gap in there and it fills the reservoir. And then the village will run it through and need to pump it through the, the four different pumps that are there into the downtown. The chemical treatment, most, some of that will be, um, decommissioned because we'll no longer have to, you know, remove harness, for example, uh, out of the water. Still have to add some chlorine to it, just, you know, cause as it goes through the pipes and gets here, you know, you lose a little bit of residual in there before it's pumped out, but chemical costs would go down too.
So nothing probably we have for night, but we'd have to look at is in deciding, assuming we go with lake water and deciding whether to go with one pipe or two, what is the cost of maintaining the existing wells? First is the cost of decommission.
So the, okay, so just to back up and clarify, the, the wells could be in, uh, an emergency, but those would also need to run through the water treatment plants to get there. So say there's a power failure or something like that, or a pump failure at the treatment plant. The backup wells don't do anything to help. That's an interesting discussion though, and something that, uh, Chris and I just kind of scratched the surface of that, um, Buffalo Grove, who would be the water supplier, also has their deep wells as emergency backups. So there will be the discussion and, you know, a decision, you know, does Long Grove maintain their deep wells as a backup to the backup?
So I guess the.
There is a cost to that.
If something happens to the pipe that we're about to build potentially. But if something happens to the pipe that we're about to build, potentially, the water to Buffalo Grove, if that pipe were to break, Buffalo Grove's backup won't do us.
Yeah, exactly.
Our existing wells.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess that would be true of any pipe distributing water to Buffalo Grove, too. If, if that pipe breaks, yeah, I'm going to have a very wet yard. I'm downhill.
You're underwater.
So, I'm just, again, we don't have an answer to it.
Will you be encouraged to have a thoughtful set of options or recommendations in two weeks?
If so, yeah.
Okay. The other, go ahead.
Are we seeing up roads that are due to be torn up? Roads where we need to tear them up again to put pipes in?
No, there's only two roads that would be impacted, potentially, one Arlington Heights Road, which was resurfaced a few years ago, and then the other is, the emergency connection would be Route eighty-three, which is I dot road.
Can we put the pipes, can we put the pipes in while the others?
The pipes are going underneath the Jensen property. That's where they go.
We bought that, we bought that home. It, it was Bob, Bob Jensen or something, yeah.
Jenkins.
Jenkins, oh Jenkins, yeah, Jenkins, yeah. We bought the guy's house.
Yeah, so there, there's a sixteen inch pipe running down the west side of Arlington Heights Road, and so it would have to, that's where it has to connect in, go through the village property that happens to go on the backside of the, um, well. So, it's just that bit of Arlington, and we don't have to tear up all of it, and it's just that part that connects.
But we could.
Don't be helicoptering and helping me drink wine, won't you? While I sit there. The other thing on the water, just on water, if you think, like strategically on the chess pieces, okay, we really need to encourage and get that South fifteen developed so we have more water customers. Our biggest problem is we need water customers. South fifteen would be one, the fire station would be one. Going through the fire station, maybe over to Briarcrest, if they would be interested in being a customer. The biggest thing we need is customers. And so, if I can plead, I want to get the South fifteen developed and I want to get stuff across our, if we can.
And one other thing.
With Lake Michigan water, we will have a more attractive product. And we have, what, three or four residential subdivisions just from eighty-three downtown that, that we can spring off things. And there, there's ways that we need to look at as to how to distribute within those subdivisions, but nevertheless, those are potential customers as well. And the more we have on the system, the less the unit cost will be in.
Absolutely. And because we have such fixed, high fixed overhead, our rate is already on the high side of acceptable.
Department indicated that they're bringing in a lot of under.
Right.
Where does this start?
The, the pipe right now ends, I think, at the north end of, uh, eighty-three and.
It's probably about, probably about the paint shop. It's probably about the paint shop, the Benjamin Moore.
Yeah.
It's Sherman Williams, yeah, Sherman Williams, by the paint shop. The, um, there's, there's two other Long Grove neighborhoods east, too. Along half the kissack.
Yeah, right.
So, if you really want to tear up Arlington Heights Road, you can go east.
But, I mean, that's one of the things, that both our supply capabilities enhance because, uh, we can go up to our allocation and Buffalo Grove has a much better capability of pumping it to us than we have of pumping it from the ground.
And, you know, besides the fact that we have to do the radium, to me, you know, we need plants, okay? And, and there's different ways to get that. The other thing on capital, so the other thing, I'm sorry, that everybody was very con, the only other unanimous thing on the proposed project was the, um, bridge, bridges over eighty-three and fifty-three. Even you said we can't do it without a federal grant, which is true. It would help our bicyclists, but. Yeah, everything else, they were mixed views, okay? The two that would affect the capital project, or the capital budget, would be HOA, um, road program and, um, the pathway that Bobby had asked about from Archer Lot to, across, um, Robert Parker problem. So, I don't know if you want to discuss those now, if you want to table those for more of a workshop kind of thing and how we, but those, as I said, Willie had two consistent ones, a consistent yes and a consistent no. Everything else, we have mixed views. So, um, some are large, some are small. The HOA, um, I'm going to ask, I, I think about it in three parts, okay? One is the, um, the what, the scope, and I think Jeff has done some, you've got mileage on the roads that are private and, and all of that. Do you put the grand total of mileage?
Yeah, we're still working on.
Oh, you're still working on, okay, all right. So, that's the what. Um, the, the, then, there's one that concerns me, which is that feels like it's, it's a devil in detail thing, and so that's a how, making sure that there's a, how do you actually do that if we were to do that? But then there's the can we, and then, Beck, I think you've had some conversations with staff on that?
The, there is a, uh, a can we, but we have to make sure that we are careful. There's, we have to remember first, under the Illinois Constitution, we can only spend public funds for public purposes. Private roads are not public purposes. However, there are some public uses even of pri, of private roads. And there are also some public purposes that can be served by, uh, having monies available for private roads. A good example, uh, I think the gentleman left about the, uh, or I guess he was on the Zoom call, about the Teasel grants. That's, that's for private property, but it's serving a public purpose. So, we'll have to be mindful that if we're going to have some kind of program, we have to make sure that we align the uses of the monies for something that can be justified as a private, as a public purpose, even if it is serving a private purpose. So, the, the ability is there, but it's got to be done with, with care and, and with precision.
So, I have a follow-up question on that. What about a subdivision with exclusively private roads and they proactively exclude the public? How do we spend public money on their private roads when they exclude the public?
Like a gated community?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think that enhances the difficulty of doing so.
Well, and so I have an opinion on that, so, um, there could be some requirements that says that, um, if the road is not accessible by the general public, then the funding wouldn't be a, you wouldn't be allowed to get the funding, right?
Yeah.
So, so you can do things like that with this program. Um, and, uh, you know, I think you can work through those things, like.
I know you're a big proponent. Those, those are the sorts of things where I really don't want to rush fast. I want that detailed.
No, but, but I think where my head, where my head was at was, um, just like anything else, you put money in the budget and you work through how, how you get it done, right? And it doesn't have to get long.
I'm sorry. Please don't say right, because I don't agree.
Well, you don't have to agree with me.
I understand.
But we do many things where we don't have it all sorted out. So, this one somehow has become that it's got to be all figured out first. And I'm like, well, no, but we can earmark money in the budget and, you know, figure out how we, how we go about doing it. The, the transition in managers and so forth, um, you know, has also caused a delay in some of those things, I know. I know, um, Jeff is trying to get the, the mileage for the roads, he's working on that, so you can get an order of magnitude, um, if, if, for example, you put away, even this year, you put away a quarter of a million dollars, what would that actually mean to somebody? Is it even meaningful at all, right?
Yeah.
And so that's what we, that's what I want us to do, is I don't want us to throw it away because, um, we, this is the first time, maybe, and the water may have just sucked the whole thing, um, with the Lake Michigan water, where we would have had extra money, where we could go and implement a program like this, which is something that we talked about, or at least I talked about, when I was running for office nine years ago or whatever it was. And so for me, it's like, I think it's very important that we figure out a way to do this. And it gets over this issue of that we, you know, we pave about a third of the roads, um, the village does, because they're, you know, grandfathered in, and the other two thirds, we don't. So, if there was a way to help those people out, um, I just think it makes sense if we're able to do it. And if we're not, and we don't have the money for it, then we don't. But I feel very passionately about trying to make it happen, so.
As I said, I, you know, I ask people to sort of weigh in, I got individual replies and they were, they were missed.
Yeah, I got it.
Can we do this? What are the rules? I live on a private public road. I live on a private road, so I benefit, but I'm not sure I agree with it, you know, as a, I won't speak for the, I've spoken for myself already. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it as a thing, I just want to, I want, I want an infrastructure for it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and, and the bookkeeping and, so, I mean, so the devil's in the details. So, let's say you put money aside, um, I don't, you know, what's the number of actual HOAs? I forget the numbers. It's seventy, eighty, I forget what the number is, right? So, do we have that somewhere? Was it fifty-two? Okay, fifty-two. So, who's going to keep track of, you know, the bookkeeping of that, right? Um, that, however the money's allocated, is it done by linear mileage? Uh, that's the stuff that, you know, has to be put together and it hasn't gotten that far yet. But let's say it was, you know, X amount per mile, put an account, set aside, and then it has to, the records have to be kept, and it could be drawn with, you could maybe not draw upon it this year, but you could draw upon it the next year, but it's in an account there for you that you have access to when you're ready to do major repairs on your roads. And that's how I envision it to work.
I, you know, the world I live in, that, that's like, if we're setting money aside, then that's like, who's the custodian of that? Is that the village? Do we do the administration? So.
Yeah, there'd be some.
That's the way I'm thinking, is like, how do you do, and is that staff? I, I wouldn't ask Debbie, the bookkeeper.
No, but I mean, you're also talking about having a finance person on, too, so.
Yep.
That could be a responsibility of that finance person. I mean, the issue you have right now is, um, all the staff is new, everyone is, right, except for Margarita. Um, and there's a lot on our plates, right, so I got it. But, um, I figured you could start somewhere, getting, getting, you know, hopefully we'll have some information from Jeff on order of magnitude and then what extra we may or may not have, and say, hey, is this even feasible? Could you put some money aside and then work towards, you know, getting everything, you know, scoped out and getting it approved by the board, a formal, uh, resolution approved by the board on what the program is, right? Um, with input from HOAs and things like that, right?
So, I guess the question is for this board, that is not currently in the capital budget that's in front of you at the moment, because we need to discuss that. And obviously, we've got some water things to figure out triangulate. This budget needed, the capital, the capital fund needs eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to do work in here now. Um, capital fund has some, you know, there'll be maybe a couple of hundreds, a hundred thousand dollars left, um, given the commitments that are there right now. We are sitting on, the general fund at the moment has, you know, about four million dollars of excess reserves. Now, some of that's got to be for Village Hall, some of that may be for this Lake Michigan water. Okay, so, it, it doesn't, it's not out of the realm of possibility money-wise. It's a matter of what's the appetite of this board.
And we don't have the whole board here, we're missing three trustees tonight, so.
Well, I got an answer from one of them, and that was the generally four, but can we do it? What are the rules? That would be important.
Yeah.
Kind of.
That's the stuff that has to get sorted out. I got it, I got it, yeah. And I, and I think there's a, I mean, well, again, I'm going to oversimplify, but I think there's a way to get through those rules. Um, and then we got to get a budget passed, passed by the end of April, so I got that, right? So, I have that. But we don't have to have the whole program figured out by the end of April. I know, I know you, you'd like to, but I, and if, and if you were not able, if, if the board was not able to come to a conclusion on this, the money could be swept back and put back in and used for something else. But just having it there, you have something to work towards it.
And right now, I, I think what you're proposing on the table also is something where it would be every year the board could have, you, you, you put the infrastructure in place and every year the board could decide, given what's facing us, is it zero, is it something?
Correct.
But the program rules, boundaries, the infrastructure is in place and that persists through time.
Right, if there's no money to fund the program that year, you just say, no, we've got all these other things, we don't have money, or the state took funds away from us, we can't make it work, so.
Yeah.
Um, this year we can't do it, or, um, at some point you discontinue. My hope is, is that, um, my hope is, you know, that revenue continues to increase, things continue to move positive in our favor, um, you know, more positive TIP increments, you know, things like that, that help us have that extra funding. And if we have that extra funding, one of the things we always talked about was, or, or had talked about a long time ago, is to have the ability to give some of that back to the HOAs that have to privately maintain their roads, and it's very expensive.
Get the South fifteen developed. No, seriously, get South fifteen developed, you know, our, our TIP district goes into downtown and the triangle, too. You know, to the extent that we can lift the valuations of any of those properties, but that farm field is a, is the most obvious there, too. And it just dominates there.
I don't, you know, if you want to talk about it, we're talking about a workshop, I don't think we can get that done.
Yeah, we could, we've got other, you know, obviously, there were like ten other things that were discussed in there. Um, as I said, there are two points of unanimity and others of dissent, of dissent. You want to do that in a workshop or keep going with this? I, I'm doing all the talking, Chris.
Well, I think it comes down to the, the road jobs and whether or not it's significant. I think, I think we need to assess that first.
That's the what, yeah.
I mean, fifty-two HOAs times, pick a number, five grand a year, quarter million dollars, do you want to do that? And in fifteen years, does that, is that significant when Stockbridge Farms has to redo their roads completely or not? I don't know how significant that is. It's less than a thousand dollars a house. You know, so is it significant? I don't know. To me, it, to me, that math needs to, to drive this whole discussion. And then some feel for how much money we want to allocate to it. I think if you set it up and the next board comes along and says, oh, that's stupid idea, we're funding zero, I think we've done everything to this service, because we're giving them the expectation that there will be some money there going forward. I get it, small bucket of money is better than no bucket of money, get it? But to me, you, you, you put a number on it that says future boards will add five percent into the budget for this unless they specifically need to pull it out, you know? Kind of like a line item that goes, goes forward. On the other hand, I live on, if, if I were to live on Chaper Road, I'd go, man, I'm kind of pissed off. They keep paving my road instead of giving it to those guys. Because that's why I bought my house, because you guys are going to pay my road. So, I, I don't know. I don't know what residents are going to think about it. I think some are going to be happy, some are going to be unhappy. I think it's a balance.
Well, you're not going to stop paving the other roads, so.
Well, you get the point. I want, I want water, I want sewers, I want lights, I want, whatever, whatever the I want is, right? I want traffic signs, I want, you know, stop signs, I want barricades on Chuck and Chaper, whatever the I want is, right? But I think you have to balance that, so I, I think it's a really interesting discussion, Bill. I don't, I don't know, I, I, I'm generally in favor of it, I think it's a great idea, I really do. If we can make it happen, I think it's a great idea, but it needs to be significant. Because fifteen years from now, a thousand dollars a house cares. I mean, you know what I mean, I mean, it's money, I get it, it's money, but special assessment to repay Stockbridge is going to be, you know, measured in millions, not in hundred thousand.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, though, so, oh, gosh, what's our assessment now? Are we up to two grand a year? So, when, when you talk per home, right, when you talk per home, it's, it's actually relevant, right, when you put in those terms? Because that's what, and, and, you know, what we do in our HOA is, um, we scroll away year after year after year, and it adds up, and then when you have to do the work, you don't have to do a special assessment, right? So.
I understand that viewpoint. I also contradict that viewpoint, like, why are you taking my money for somebody else's benefit down the road?
Yeah.
Which I'm not going to use.
Both are valid.
You know, fifteen years from now, I'll be, you know, thinking about it during that.
Could be, could be, yeah.
Right, so I, I think there's a big PR issue involving this, too. I think we really have to poll the crowd and see the crowd things, or at least assess, not poll the crowd, but just assess how people feel about it. Yeah, I'm generally, I think that's the idea to pursue and.
I know, I need, need to do it, I know, and, um, and I know we, uh, started doing it, right? So, yeah. Okay. Any thoughts or, no?
Because I don't have much voice.
I, I got you tonight. Should have put something on the agenda for you to talk about.
I'm willing to discuss it.
Yeah.
Generally, I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
We are a wealthy community, people, knowing that they work private roads, public roads. I would rather have the big priority items addressed first. Water. Generation who is here tonight, they want a bike, they don't want cars, they want a car. You know, create, say, a footpath community. That's a big deal. You know, we, we are so scattered, that's why I've been saying bridges, you know, for the last seven years, whatever. It's the easiest way to get people to where they need to go. You know, why does mom have to get in the car, try, try to play with his friend, to do homework, whatever, whatever it is. If you look at it environmentally, we shouldn't be encouraging more cars. They're, they're building condominiums in large cities, there are less parking spaces than units. Much encourage people not to have cars. We, we, we come from the past, but when it comes to things like that, we've got to... I'm willing to discuss it. I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to it. I just think that...
We have to do this, right?
Okay.
It's interesting, and, um, Colin, Colin Franz Lin, who lives in Denver, and he walks all over the place. He said he had to get extra, something extra on his car battery because it was losing charge, 'cause he uses his car so little.
Trickle charge. That's, that's what young people are expecting.
Now, I'm gonna play devil's advocate on that. We're like this unique village that has large lots, houses are separated very far. Um, and, uh, part of this village was founded about protecting all that, right? So the notion that we could be like, uh, an urban town like, oh, I don't know, what's, pick, pick one of the other, I mean, maybe monoline, what they're trying to become, right? We're just not like that, right? So, um, and then the, you know, hopefully, you know, maybe the Route fifty-three corridor will afford us this ability to get a, a path from north to south that we don't have. And that, helping spoking off of that, it, you know, could create a lot of capabilities. Um, but, um, that's, you know, that, that's not what this community, that's not how this community was set up, right? So, so that's part of the challenge, you know what I mean?
Doesn't mean we can't change the future.
I bet. I don't know, I don't know if I totally want us to look like, you know, you hear me say this all the time. I wanna come to Long Grove twenty-five years from now, thirty years from now, I've gotta open eleven. And, um, and I want it to, you know, look very similarly, right? And, and maybe there's a way to get around, uh, on a golf cart or on a, you know, on some other, uh, you know, bike or whatever.
I, I think affording a, you know, enabling walking and bicycle and pathways isn't automatically urban.
No, but it's just, uh, just think about just how our village is set up and just how spread our, spread out we are and the practicality of getting that done too. So, just saying.
There's a safety issue to, to what you speak about too. I mean, the pathways we have, like up by Ravenna, you know, there's nobody around to see people on those pathways. I mean, people don't use them, they're afraid of being on them too. You know, there's nobody there. It's dark, it's nowhere else. So, I mean, there's a whole bunch that fits into that exact point. If you're downtown Arlington Heights, different story. You have people all around, people walk, people feel safer. But, you know, in Long Grove, I don't know if I'm gonna be walking three miles on that path to go to the downtown, to get a rear, uh, place, you know. Really? It's just too hard, too long? No, so I think, I think, I think it's an interesting discussion. It is almost kind of a vision, the Long Grove discussion.
Hey, we need that workshop, yeah.
I love what you're saying about, I think, three, three and between lines, get that pathway worked out, and how we can get that at first. I get that. I, I don't...
We're not gonna cut the entire pathway through this entire town, but...
Negative, I can't.
Well, unless you get people to, to give a season to go through...
Right, right.
Backyards.
Other reactions today, or anything?
To go through backyards or entrance of, there are strips of land in Long Grove that are for sale for ten dollars. I can buy a strip lamp between two houses, country hall of states. They're just, it's true to the land.
That's odd.
Yeah, but it's, it's true, so...
Remember the pathway thing was discussed for, for the thirty years I've been here, and literally, there is a map somewhere.
I have one.
Yes, well, the problem was trying to get, keep the residents to agree or disagree to allow people to walk in backyard or split their lots. I, I think that is very complicated, you know, I think, I think...
It's, it's like, you can need sales tax revenues, and you can need for people to get here. And all these elderly people, and Lucille, or Arby Chase, you know, they're stuck. Their families could come visit, put mom or dad in a wheelchair and take him across a pedestrian route and go for breakfast, go get coffee, whatever, you know, on South fifteen. If we have three apartments, don't you, if you get density, you get tax revenues. It's an issue. And, you know, we're talking private roads, I get that. I'm willing to, to discuss.
Thank you.
Can I quickly run through the other ones that was...
Yeah, please do, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna go, no, no, we needed to have, we need to have these two week conversations. Um, I'm gonna put two comments together for my own, for reasons. Rebranding project, generally for. Um, I, economic development consultant, generally against. I think in both cases, the economic consultant people are kinda like, yeah, but not now. We need to have specifics on a strategic vision of what's that for. So, I'm gonna say no. Uh, like, that was a generally against, not everybody, but a generally against. Then it's not against having an economic development consultant, it's against having that person now, because we don't have a real goal for him or her to pursue.
That one can easily be added later.
Yeah.
As opposed to an EDC consultant. Can we have an EDC come in?
Can we have an EDC come in?
No, bring back the economic development commission, so...
I would, I think it's a fair, it's a fair conversation, my own, I have a sense, but go ahead. Sorry?
We think people are able and willing to make things happen.
I, honestly, I think we should let our staff put some risk down. The branding, again, that's something we concluded. It's not a big money thing. I definitely don't think that we should be asking staff to do that right now, but it would make a ton of sense to me. And generally, people were for it, not, not a hundred percent. But it would make sense to say, oh, you know, as we bring, bring a new village hall or something like that, maybe there's an opportunity there. So, not starting right now first, but maybe sometime in the second half. So, if you're good, we can put some money and see how that adds up. It won't be a big dollar amount. Um, increasing president's stipend? Pardon me? You would share that? Awesome. Increasing president's stipend, mixed, generally, I don't think there's an appetite, you know. Other, other, it, some towns are completely volunteer, some are. Not something to spend our time talking about. You agree?
Uh, we wouldn't be able to put it in this year's budget in any event, 'cause it wouldn't be able to take effect.
Oh, that's right.
And you cannot change...
It would be made first, it would be made first, yeah, so...
Well, it wouldn't even, I, I, are you up in twenty?
Next, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so it, it could have something effective, uh, May of twenty twenty-five.
Right, you're right.
So fiscal twenty-six.
It would not be this budget. It has to be in place a hundred and eighty days before the next election that affects those people.
And I think the way we would do it, if, if that's something the board wants to consider, would be to change the code first and then it can be put into the, the budget into the...
Right. I would say, I, I, in general, it was mixed, but not a ton of appetite for it. So, um, surveying historic buildings in downtown, generally yes, but being really clear that surveying is gathering info in no way is that we want to designate and, you know, force property owners to pursue anything historic. That's the way, that's the comments came back. It was like, it was a data gathering. You got a, there. Do you wanna chew on that? People, do you all wanna discuss about, discuss it or not? It was, the people, when people got back, they said, look, I'd spend money if it was data gathering, that's all.
Well, you know, the only other thing too was, it was, there was this idea, um, that it was beyond the downtown though. 'Cause it was this idea that there was homes and barns and... Really of, um, perhaps, uh, being designated, somebody wanted to, historic, right? Could be, yeah, could be a benefit to homeowners. My, my, so let me just be real, I'll be really frank. So my worry is, my worry is, is I want businesses to invest in their buildings, property owners invest in their buildings, and I wanna see businesses down there. And I just don't want that to get in the way of development, 'cause things are happening now.
I would agree with you.
So that is my big fear.
I, I, I want, i- if, I, gathering data, I got no problem with that. But I completely agree in that priority that I want our downtown to be developed.
Yep. And there's a lot going on right now. I mean, just, you know, the, the, what do you call them, the tresses or whatever they are.
Truly is just gathering data.
I think there may be different intent though than what's being explained. I think there may be more intent than what's being explained.
Well, she's the one who brought it up, so her intention is to...
Not you, but I think we, on the architectural commission, there's a different intent for the inspection.
Yeah, so, but I mean, so, a- a- again, it's just, it's not a big sum of money.
It's not a big sum of money.
So, um...
It's something that could be, honestly, at least the, the one thing I saw was like, a year or two ago, it was seventy-five hundred dollars. That's our, our manager could make that call if we have it in the budget, but it's not a big sum of money. Um, year round lights on RPC bridge, mixed, what cost?
Something I'd be in favor of.
Mm-hmm. I, I guess, I don't know what it costs, so... We don't have a lot of staff time to figure it out necessarily. I'm not a vote, I don't...
What does it cost exactly to build it?
We, so the lights we have on them now can be maintained throughout the course of the year. So we designed it that we could just leave at least the strip off at the very low end, so that it can find torn pieces out all, all year round. So, and that costs, and we can maintain.
Okay.
So that's easy for us to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, here's my own thought, and one, there was a comment, it wasn't mine, but someone commented on like, could you make it seasonal? To me, anything that...
That was my comment, yeah.
We, we've made it so that we can design, there's twenty-four bulbs on each side of it, that we can actually color code those twenty-four bulbs based on the season we're in or the activity that's happening in the season. So, we planned for that and we, we designed it, so this time, we actually built a lighting scheme based on how we can use it. So we can do that at any point.
So, you would maintain that, who's paying for the electricity and, and do we need to do anything about that? I guess that's the question.
Electricity goes to the, to the power pole, and then again, we have no problem maintaining that.
I'm su, you know, the electricity normally, we get a flat rate, um, per whatever, streetlight, right? They don't actually meter it, so I don't even know how we're, we're paying for that electricity.
To me, anything, anything we do in the bridge to make it different, every couple of months, some people notice the thing?
But it's a, it's a flat rate per, like, connection, like, 'cause I know that from being an HOA president, that it's a certain amount per light bulb.
Okay.
That's how we determine it.
So that was one...
So the incremental cost of electricity is zero.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And the HCLGVA will maintain it, so the incremental cost to us, like, two is zero.
So, so you have the ability, then who controls the colors, right? So for Valentine's Day, you could make it red, right?
Right, so we, we've got things, so we just, we turned everything off because we have so many holiday lights in town. We didn't want, we were saying, why are all these decorations, we had a time, which was out. We figured, after the movie's over, we'll then start color coding based on the seasonality or what activities out there. And that was our game plan, because we can buy all LED lights, which have a long lifespan to it, and just interchange them. So it's gonna be twenty-four on one side, twenty-four on the other, and that'll be on our entrance and entrance to Long Grove.
Yeah.
Got it. I'd be, I'd be, I'd be totally like, I, I still wanna get, what is that town in Iowa? They have speakers on every other light. And so that is, so the, you know, the visitor center can control synchronized music.
So we're actually looking at, well, we're looking at to do an out for power poles, because we can actually use that as our base point.
So you know what they do? It's, it's the place where Ente, or whatever, Ente's archaeology, they, they sold it, assigned it. So you can, you, Leclerc, so you can have, you know, like, the Philippine sperm can buy one of the, uh, the, the signage rights to one of the music things.
We were, we were looking at some just branding for, for holidays, just music and so forth, just to make it pop.
Yeah. And then the big one, which is pursue home rule. And I think we should have that as a workshop for different times. I've done some data gathering myself also. Um, and I am, Alex stands ready to partner to help with some of those things. But I spent a half hour and some other stuff with the system manager, or with system manager from Barrington, to understand what their lessons learned were. So, again, they're, not everybody for it. I would say it was generally more for than against. The clarification, of course, that would be a huge education thing to tell people, understand, at least this board has no interest in raising a residential property tax, um, or instituting, I shouldn't even say raise. It's much more about having the tools to do things like, if you have home rule, if somebody hits the bridge, could we charge a higher fee, a higher fine?
We can, we...
Good.
More than seven hundred and fifty dollars.
We could charge a higher fine when people hit the stupid bridge, okay? We could, if we wanted to, um, charge a vacancy tax for property owners that aren't doing anything to improve their property. We could do, it's a lot more about tools, um, than money.
Can I ask a question though? So one of the things that I don't understand, and maybe Dick knows, is what does it cost to, to do, do everything, right? So, I mean, is it, 'cause we're putting it in a budget item, is it the legal fees?
Oh, I think...
Well, the, the primary thing is, is going to be informing, uh, information, but there's a limit as to what we can do. I mean, we can provide pros and cons. We can't advocate for it. So, uh, I think, I think first the thing that the board needs to think about is whether it even wants to move forward with it.
Yeah.
There, there actually will be one kind of a lark of a cost, but, um, we're gonna need translation services to get the question on the ballot, because, uh, it has to be translated into multiple languages.
Okay.
Not just Spanish?
Well, I, I don't know what our census tract says here in Long Grove. Uh, we just had one where it actually was, uh, Mandarin, uh, Spanish and Polish, as well as, uh, English. So, you know, it, it's gonna depend on the census tract.
Can't we just do that in Google?
Uh, no, we actually have somebody, somebody who has the, the capability to sort that out.
Oh, wow, okay.
You can AI assist it.
I, so, my conversation, at least with Barrington, you know, they, they did, it was not high cost. It was cost in terms of time and energy. They had about eight town halls, and except for business trips, every trustee and major staff people were there. So it's the times, the consumption. They sent out postcards, okay? They were informing about this thing, and their advocacy was to make sure they vote, show up and vote. Um, but, you know, a lot of, they did a little bit of, um, they made videos. The, it turned out the out of pocket cost was not high.
Okay.
It was time and, and energy.
I have a legal question. You've stated time and again, we have no intention of implementing the property tax. That's not what this is about. Is there a way of putting something in that says, and is this actually legal? That there will be no property tax for at least twenty years, ten years?
Um, we cannot in the ballot...
That's the grand child of King Charles the Third.
Uh, we, we cannot in the ballot. The ballot is a statutory language that we have to use. And that's what it, uh, you know, that's the limits of it. Now, for several different communities that I've worked with, there had been a companion, uh, ordinance that was adopted, basically saying that, uh, in those cases, they did have a property tax already, but they said, in the event we get home rule, we will still abide by the tax cap legislation. Keep in mind, home rule would not be subject to that. And so, they have used that commitment as sort of the pledge to the voters that by voting for home rule, you're not voting for a tax. Now, that's an ordinance. The ordinance can be changed.
Right.
But it at least is, uh, an indication of what the intent is. But you cannot bind, uh, bind the community to not have a tax based on home rule through that referendum. But you cannot bind, uh, bind the community to not have a tax based on home rule through that referendum.
But then the next board who wants the tax can come in.
That's exactly right. That's, and that's, that's the, that's the hesitancy about relying on an ordinance.
Right, and that to me is the reason I'm dead against it. I, we talked about home rule, home, home rule here twice when I lived here. Uh, it's come up a couple of times, I think once on the ballot or maybe twice, I can't remember, once. Thank you. Um, and it's just, that's the fear. I mean, we taxed the debt already, and the next board will go, hey, hey, we need money. We need to build a bridge over eighty-three, let's just throw it back time. It's just too easy, and then it's so.
So the answer to my question is basically, we can do the ordinance, but it doesn't really mean anything because the ordinance can be overruled.
There, there's no permanence to it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that was, the last one was the, the pathway, the archer and R T C pedestrian path. Again, that's in the cap, that's a capital budget item.
Yeah, Bobby is not here, so.
Bobby's not here, so we can table this.
We could probably table it, not a big, much item.
The thing that we will then move forward in terms of, like, the next iteration, would be part-time finance director. Your own lights on the R T C bridge, which doesn't sound like it's actually a whole lot of cost. A rebranding project, which is also low cost. Um, and the things that we should think about and chew on are those big ones, the H O A program and home rule, if we want to continue to discuss those. Does that sound right?
Yeah. Well, you also have the, um, how do we handle the water, uh, situation now too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a new one.
And so we need Jeff to, you know, fine tune, um, the estimates based on what you know and what you, what we can and can't do and all those. Yeah, I mean, and if the well has to be de-commissioned, there's a savings there, and you, you need to put that thing all together because it may not be as expensive as you think, right? Do we need a water operator? Do we lose a water operator? That's how much a year, uh, we pay for a water operator?
Well, to, to answer the question, you know, you can go down a class in water operator, you don't need one who's specialized.
Correct. So all that has to be part of the, the thing, because it may not be really, uh, whatever it is, one point nine or one point eight, um, because your, because the recurring cost is going to go away too, and it's in the service, right? So, kind of need to know all that stuff. Without, um, getting into the minutia, they're just at a high level, right? These are, you know.
That timeline it out.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, that was a lot of chewing. Um, Chris has come in and, and like, got it right away, which is very helpful. Dana's been working hard and late for, uh, a lot of this, and Jeff has been super valuable. And now Nicole is also listening in and being a sponge, I think. The one thing also, you know, when I got here seven years ago, we didn't really forecast any capital in general. You don't see it, but in here, all of this stuff is weaving and hanging together, or will.
How about a big thank you? Thank you. Thanks for your work.
I'm careful, so the downtown, but I've got, I've got all the owners that are in the village having a lot. Us, John, Pecy, the village, having a park district, chief, all willing to do enhancement programs to make that public lot. We're also going to be applying for some grants, see if we can, because I'm familiar with, we're giving a lot of business to our surrounding communities with hotels. So we're going to, there's money out there that could be a lot worth grant money. We'd like to find a way that we can make this a public lot and do like a partnership with the village to see how we can come together. And all the owners, the kind of landeysmen, to say, this is now our third lot, like we have Stempel and we have Archer. If there's some way to allocate some maybe dollars where we can incorporate some engineering to find out how to bring this all together as a downtown. And just, I throw that out there, it's, it's too soon, I just, it's something we've all agreed to as far as, as a downtown, we need that.
Can I ask one favor though, Ryan? Can you put a diagram together?
I will.
So that it goes before the board and just say, here's the area that we're thinking about.
I will. I'll have, we've been all working up lenders and doing this. I'm just bringing it to, I've talked to some people about what we're planning. But I'll just bring to, to, to you guys all aware that this will come and I'll have it, we, we just say, end of that, end of this year or early next year to do the project. It's just, it was getting all the landowners to say, yeah, this makes sense. So basically, everyone owns private property for parking. And we have a big parking issue in town. So everyone's willing to give up their parking lot and say, let's make this the lot. The park district is willing to give up the land and incorporate it into a parking lot. So right now, we've gone from five different individual items and grass to one major lot.
That area behind the tavern, behind his new building, that, that, that mishmash.
So that would become one nice paid lot, like we have at Stempel and we have at Archer. It would be branded as a public lot, so it's no more private property. It'd be allocated for a TV charge, for your lighting, and again, it just, it just gives us a better branding in town. We're part of a draw all areas.
Are you proposing that it gets turned over to the village to become public, or is the partnership, public, private?
Where if we count the, to where we have a landeasement to the village, we all try to create some reason so that it maintains that for the future life of parking. So it's not one of those that it's created today to remodel. The design of this is that we all kind of agree that this is for parking, it's going to be maintained as parking, so that it doesn't change with the new.
Well, I'm going to read it.
No, it's meant to be a dedicated public parking lot.
What? Real part of it.
And he's talking about the other area.
Yeah.
The areas, uh, sort of in the northwest quadrant of Nicole McEnvy and R T C. Behind the.
Behind the hair salon, behind the tavern, behind John's Candy Shop.
The south of Buffalo River.
And so, and then it, and then it, you know, if you keep going north, you end up in park district land?
Yeah, and the park district land, we're willing to use property there as well, so they would give us some of the land that would incorporate these parking lots.
Two other finance items, by the way. You and I have a, we've got a trickle back on H L T V A. And, um, we kicked off planning with the audit, auditing firm.
Put it on public bathrooms. Are we going to talk to a lot of public?
You know, that's on our capital plan, but not for this year, right?
So, hi. So, um, the visitor's center looks like they're going to be moving into the unit one. Uh, we're proposing that we're going to make public restaurants and we're taking the permit. Two public restaurants, which will cover our segment of town. And the, so the others we're looking at is one of the restaurant on their side, the second side. So that the idea here is public, public, private partnership again, uh, we become a, the village. Ask before a, a potential grant, which is meetings and upkeep of it. So we would cover all the expense, we would cover the, 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 we would stay on, we don't need it. They have a cleaning company come out, we have toilet paper, tissue and all that good stuff that we need to do there. And then this will be dedicated for the village to have public restaurants and be promoted and branded as public restaurants. So as long as our visitor's center is open, or still for seven days a week, we have access to public restaurants in one segment. I know you guys are looking at the segment, um, and we'll be working with some of the landowners and the other parks in the city. Give, give the four segments where the village is not specifically owning bathrooms. It'd be the property owners that would actually own the bathrooms, but we would create the environment that is publicly available. I think that would solve a lot of the expenses, because it was, it was a large expenditure for anyone to take on one day area to do that.
And the bathrooms would both be open and visitors, some are just open.
Correct, so if you have that nine to six or seven, and then during events, we'd be open through the whole period.
So guys, it's going on nine o'clock, so any more budget discussion? Um, can we end that right here?
Are you guys good?
Okay, thank you. Um, then if we can move into the village president trustee reports, I, you know, I attended the Lake County Municipal Breakfast. I probably should have put a report together because it's just a lot of interesting dialogue in that meeting, right? Um, and, uh, I guess I'll just leave it at that, we're out of time here. So if, if I think, if I have time, I may put them all together, a couple of points. Also, you know what I'll do is I'll also send out, they always hand out their, the, uh, Lake County Municipal League Agenda. I'll hand that out. I know there was something about Swalco and coming up with a battery program for a tax or something, the recycling batteries?
We haven't had a meeting in a long time, so.
It came up in the meeting, so let me see what I can put together and send out to you guys rather than do that on the fly here. Um, trustee Browski, any, any report? Um, trustee Kritzmeyer? Trustee O'Connor? Can't say anything. Um, trustee Tanucci? Um, village manager Parkman, do you have anything?
Nothing, other than I survived my first weekend.
All right, um, then there's no need to go to executive session. Can we have a motion to adjourn? Well, we already had the public comment.
I, I, I thought the agenda for theirs was still on the agenda. I didn't realize it was being taken off the agenda. So, can I speak on Brothers Field or is that not a possible?
Well, can we talk afterwards? Because I think that, that's the, that's the issue. I think we need to have everything all organized, which we did not have tonight. There was not, it, it ended up on the agenda at the very last minute without even anything being thought through or organized, right? Does that make sense?
Oh, okay. I just, we're just wanting to try to figure out how we incorporate that, make sure we keep that in service.
I don't think anyone wants to get rid of that, Ryan. I think that it was, there's, there was, it just ended up on the agenda and then all the other stuff that needs to be done.
Okay.
There's nothing organized yet, nothing yet, right? So something has to happen, hopefully, hopefully stuff can get organized between now and the next. Village staff, Monday line.
And Monday line had a permit for this paperwork from the last three weeks, never got.
To the best of my knowledge, um.
Which, which paperwork are you asking about?
They're talking about Brothers Field.
Right, I mean, that's, it's a typical review, I mean, they've been reviewing materials, the process that they, they go through that they've had for a while, it's just like, anything that they have, it takes time to review. It's similar to the process for, for all the stuff they have before it goes to.
Should be completed.
It's important in the process that the village has had documents that they're spending a great deal of money on.
I understand.
They're trying to promote this so that it's a brand.
I understand.
And we do need to start promoting, so that's kind of where we're at.
I got it.
We're going to move forward and let people know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so a motion to adjourn? Moved by trustee Tanucci? Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, all in favor? All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.